Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for coming. This is a very, very important press conference at the Common Sense Caucus is with us today along with other people. My name is Councilman Bob Holden. We have Councilwoman Joanne Areola, Councilmember Kristi Valdano, and well, thank you again. We're here because of the comments that came to light last week by Dr. Jay Varma. Now, this was the most distressing, especially the people that lost a lot during the pandemic, during COVID-19. Many of us lost loved ones. Many of us lost their jobs. Many of us lost everything. And I'm here today, and we're here today, to talk about this, about the comments by Dr. Varma, who was the COVID czar. He was dictating what we should do while he was doing the opposite. And that's what needs to be investigated. But let's talk about personal stories. We're going to bring up a few. I lost my mom to COVID, who was in a nursing home. And it was partly because of Governor Cuomo, I blame, partly, joined by Vicky Palladino, the council member. She got COVID twice in a nursing home. I couldn't see her. Couldn't see her. She died alone. I could not see her. She got pneumonia, died in a hospital, couldn't see her. This was magnified thousands of times, if not millions of times, across our country. But in New York City, we shut down everything. We shut down businesses that never came back. We shut down schools that students could never get that year back. We shut everything down. We lost a lot. And then we find out that a lot of this was made up stuff, apparently, by Jay Varma, Dr. Varma. So I have today to talk about a few things, and we have a bunch of stories here today that people who lost their jobs, first responders, lost their jobs. They were out there. They weren't working remotely. How many of you guys were working remotely? None. Two. They would not work. Most of the first responders, if not all, were not working remotely. They were out there. And what did they get in return? The thanks later on? They got a pink slip. We're going to hear from a lot of people today. I want to introduce Councilwoman Joanne Areola, who will talk about the brave.
Yeah. Also, I'm joined by Common Sense Caucus member, Councilmember Vicky Palladino. I stand here today, shoulder to shoulder, with our first responders, sanitation workers, teachers, and every city worker who was forced to retire, resigned, or was terminated because of the COVID-19 vaccine mandate. This week, we learned that Dr. Jay Varma, the former New York City Senior Advisor for Public Health, admitted to forcing an unnecessary COVID-19 mandate and shutdown New York City. The mandate and shutdown was imposed on city workers, schoolchildren, businesses, business owners, and all our residents, and has caused irreparable damage. Marriages were ended. Families were torn apart. We have city workers who have been forced to live in homeless shelters. They are waiting on food pantry lines because of the irresponsible choices by Dr. Varma and the de Blasio administration. Dr. Varma stated in one of the exposed videos that everyone who was exposed to the virus was, and I quote, "Breathe on you, or you've got it injected into you." It's the same immune response. This statement clearly validates what so many in our city workers, our city workers, we as elected officials, have been saying. This was forced upon them. They had all been exposed to the worst strains of the virus during the height of the pandemic. They had faced COVID-19 with little to no PPE, while everyone else was mandated to home, watching the news and watching Dr. Varma update us and tell us lies. The recent findings only prove what we have known all along, that the vaccine mandate and COVID shutdown were unnecessary. But I'm not here to talk about the past any longer. We've been doing that for way too long. We all know what happened. And I'm here to talk to you about the future and the plan as we make as many people again as we can. The plan includes: New York City workers be reinstated immediately. We must reinstate. Give us back America. We need outreach through every city agency to contact as many workers as possible to see if they wish to return to New York City workforce. We must make sure that all stays and appeals to lawsuits are immediately lifted. All of the money that we have spent and all of the money that we will save by removing these appeals and withdrawing them could more than compensate for the overtime and loss of compensation wages to these municipal employees. They are owed this. I don't want to hear that the city cannot fund this. We have no problem funding $5 billion a year for people who have entered our city illegally. A program to compensate and monitor those who are vaxxed injured. That's something we haven't spoken about yet. There are so many who are vaxxed injured, even though they were vaccinated. They have long-term COVID and many residual effects that have come to them medically to their bodies. An after-action review of COVID policy with the public commenting. We need the public to weigh in on this. We need to make sure it's out on the table once and for all, and that the people of this city are heard. This is a measure that is well overdue. And it's time for everyone to do the right thing, for this administration to do the right thing. During a hearing, someone most rightly said, "Mayor Adams, you don't want to end up on the wrong side of history." The mandates were then lifted. But we don't have everyone back to work yet. We need the mayor to get on the right side of history with this and understand that the de Blasio administration lied, cost people their livelihoods, cost them their lives. And we want to make sure that those injustices are righted, and we need it to be done immediately. That is why I penned a letter to the mayor's office, asking for those very things to happen. Through the years that we've been going through this, I've had the pleasure of meeting the bravest for choice and hearing their stories and knowing what they've been through. And anyone who has heard their testimony along the way, or knows of their stories through the media telling their stories, could never, ever, ever think that they don't deserve the right to come back to work. The job that they love to do, the job that they fought to do during the COVID-19 shutdown, and the lives that they saved without the proper PPE, only to be shunned after the mandates were in place. I'd like to call up the bravest for choice now.
Hello, everybody. My name's Brittany Fogarty, and I just want to thank Joanne Areola and the Common Sense Caucus that's behind me today. Common sense isn't too common in New York City and America. And Joanne said it best, you know, we need to stop the bleeding. There's people behind me that are still suffering. I'm back to work, but I'm not happy until they're all back to work. She was kind enough to, you know, not just open her doors to us and listen to our stories, but she opened our hearts. And she let us in, and she's been a constant, constant support for us when nobody else would listen. Mayor Adams treated us like garbage. He wouldn't meet with us. I think he just recovered from COVID for the third time, you know? I have my natural immunity. I have my physical health. And this tested my mental health, my spiritual health, this whole time, being out of a job. It didn't tear my family apart. It only made us stronger, you know? And I'm grateful for that. And I have a few more people who'd like to say a few words, but I'm not here to judge this Varma guy on what he does on his own time. But he purposely went out to hurt people like myself and my family and make it difficult, make it difficult for us to live in this city, to exist in this city. That's wrong. It's very simple. And Mayor Adams likes to hide behind his legal department. And he says what he's doing is legal, but I know it's not right. And history will show us that, that what he did was legal for the time, but it wasn't right. He stepped on our religious liberties. He stepped on all over our human rights and treated us like garbage. And then he fired the garbage. It's so messed up. And enough out of me. I'm going to bring up Matt Conner. He's the brains of the operation. And after that, it's going to be Sophie Medina, who's the boss of the operation.
Is that your name and spelling for us, please? Sure. My name is Matt Conner, M-A-T-T-C-O-N-N-O-R. Brendan's estimation of my abilities is generous, but I appreciate it. And, you know, laughter has been really the only thing that has kept us going. This has been an unbelievably difficult time the last three years. I'll remind everyone watching today, almost three years ago, we marched 20,000 New Yorkers over that bridge, to City Hall to say no to the mandate. It was one of the largest labor demonstrations in New York City's history. And it's part of the untold history of this COVID regime's disastrous policies. Now, this mandate started with a stroke of a pen, and it can end with a stroke of a pen. And I think that's why what the City Council, the Common Sense Caucus, what they're doing is so important, because there is a political solution to end this madness. We have people that worked the pandemic at risk to themselves, their own families, and we didn't ask for anything. We just showed up to work and did our jobs. And that's all we wanted to do. And that's all we still want. Yet we still have firefighters and paramedics and EMS workers, EMTs, that are not allowed to work because they took a stand. And they stood on their own morals and held their ground. We said three years ago, we hold the line. In my line of work, we don't leave people behind. People are still holding the line. We're here today to back them up and bring an end to this madness. So.
Thank you. My name is Sophie Medina. I'm a retired firefighter from the New York City Fire Department. And I lost my employment for about eight months, my husband for about a year. And we went back to work thanks to the efforts of the Common Sense Caucus. Specifically, we had aligned to Joanne Areola. My own city council member in Brooklyn never reached out to us after we sent countless letters or tried to get in touch with a bunch of city council members. Thank God for Joanne Areola for taking our call. We've been fighting this for over two years. And you guys are just here broadcasting this today because of a salacious tidbit was exposed from what people are calling a right-wing extremist. I'm a registered Democrat, and this happened to me. I haven't voted Democrat for over 10 years because of what I've seen my party do. This is disgusting. You should all be ashamed of yourselves, with the exception of a few that I see here that have been covering this, and it's been the independent media. Shame on the media. Shame on the media, shame on the media, for not going after the truth when we were all mortally put out of work.
Cover the truth. Stop being fake.
Shame on the media.
Two or five in your commercial.
Shame on the media for not taking our calls, for not covering the biggest march for civil rights that we, the people, put together in four days, when our careers and our right to bodily autonomy was being threatened. Shame on the city council members who aren't here today. There's 51 city council members. There's 14 in the Common Sense Caucus, made up of Democrats and Republicans. So shame on these city council members that try to pit us against each other based on race and sex and socioeconomic that they caused themselves, that their pockets are getting lined.
Yes.
And where are our unions?
Say it.
Where are the people's unions, the worst ones? Call your unions if you're a union member and demand them, why aren't they here? Ask them, why aren't they here? Public servants answer to us, the people. And that's why these public servants are here for us today. Go out and find your local council member and ask them, where were they when your rights were being violated and continue to be violated? We need a reckoning. These liars need to be held publicly accountable. An apology isn't enough. And an admission of guilt isn't enough. Remember Nuremberg. Remember the French Revolution, because that was we, the people. And it doesn't have to get that far, but it's gotten that far. You guys took away so much from us, and you need to pay. Mayor Adams, you could have done the right thing on day one. You chose not to.
Shame on you.
You walked away and ran away from us when we were confronted by the truth.
Shame on you, Mayor.
To the public, get involved and get activated. There's more than us than there are every other politician in here. Vote no on Prop 1 on Election Day. Turn over your ballots. On September 29th, we're going to rescue the republic in DC with a unity party. Be there. Let your voices be heard.
Yes.
We have a republic to rescue. We are the people. We are the fighters. Listen to us. Do not listen to paid celebrities that have something to hide. Thank you.
Another strong voice of reason, also from Queens, we have Vicky Palladino, the council member.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to begin with thanking Stephen Crowder and his team. He would not be having this press conference today without them shining the light on what we have long suspected to be fraudulent. Today, we are hearing from the people who had their lives turned upside down by the policy of Dr. Jay Varma, who forced upon this city, working people who didn't deserve any of this, while Dr. Varma was out taking his drugs and having his sex parties. And who gives a damn about what he did? But what he did do, and I want to say thank you to Stephen Crowder and his team for bringing the light, what we already knew to actually be happening to us. You know, I have my own story. Back in 2001, I hosted a small Christmas party. A lot of you may remember this. I was crowned the Congo COVID Queen because I had a small Christmas party. I was all over the newspaper internationally and throughout this country. And I was held accountable, or so they said, during my 21 election. And I will tell you this, that party took place December 9, 2020, before Cuomo opened it up in 2019, or closed in 2019, on December 19. I want to say this, I received death threats the worst ever, that I didn't think such hatred was actually possible. And the restaurant that hosted that party, they were fined thousands, tens of thousands of dollars, and they lost their licorice. Meanwhile, Dr. Varma himself was out with his privileged friends, ignoring the draconian rules he forced us all to live under. This has been... I know we've been vindicated, and here we are. I can proudly stand here and say, we were right.
Yes.
And they were wrong. First, we were told by Dr. Varma, Dr. Fauci, Randy Weingarten, and the others at the establishment, that the school would be too dangerous, too dangerous to attended person. Our kids were forced to stay home. We were repeatedly lied to, told that remote classrooms were just as good, if not better, than regular classrooms. We were told that the learning loss was a myth. The learning loss was a myth? No, it was not a myth, because our kids today are suffering. They are years behind, that we won't even see the repercussions of this for yet decades to come. If we were told even pre-K and the kindergarten kids, they had to wear masks, all of this was a farce, a farce. And imagine, imagine being a young kid, five, six, seven years old, when everything determines what you see and what you hear. And do you realize they didn't see a single human face for a year and a half when they were told to stay home? Meanwhile, our teachers went to work during 2020. They didn't miss a day. They did not miss a day. And they are suffering for it today. Okay, this was all predicated on a lie. And meanwhile, wealthy parents could afford to send, could afford private tutors, keep their kids up to speed. Working class, once again, here you go. Middle-class families suffered the deep learning loss and lack of social development. Today, the COVID generation is further behind in testing and grade level than any other generation in history. We still don't know what this means and may not know for 20 to 30 years. Meanwhile, our schoolteachers, who were hailed as heroes of the pandemic, were told they would lose their jobs if they did not comply with Dr. Varma's vaccine mandate. A vaccine we know did nothing to stop the spread of the infection, yet we were told it would be our only key to getting our civil rights back. Seriously? No. We weren't breaking any laws. We were violating rules, rules that they made up. There were no laws violated. In my office, I took pride in never asking or requiring mandate compliance in order to work.
Good for you, Vicky.
True. For all the schoolteachers working for me right now, my chief of staff, and my constituent services liaison, which is Daphne right here. She's been all over the news. Daphne is the single person, she is the unicorn here. She actually won her case. She is able to go back to work. And yet, the school will not allow her into her building. This woman worked 29 years. She is six months short of her pension. And yet, the school, we reached out to the UFT. We reached out to the Department of Education. UFT gave us a bunch of votes. They told them, go, go, go. Don't worry, they'll let you in. They did not. She went back to the same school that she taught for 29 years. And the principal, who knows her for all those many years, said to Daphne, I'm sorry, I can't let you in the building. She goes to Astoria every day at 7:30 in the morning and does a very small video, just to say, I'm here today. I'm here ready, willing, and able to report to work. And they say, no, thank you, Daphne. Okay? So, the law is on our side. We're right. And we have been vindicated over and over again. But unfortunately, the right still is not over. The fight is still not over. We have a lot more work to do, and we have a lot more hypocrisy to overturn, which is why we are here today to demand an investigation into Dr. Varma and those that were with him. What we have to do now is call upon the Adams administration to do what is right. We have a shortage of teachers. Guess what? We got 1,800 of them that can get put back to work. We have a shortage of our police, the best of the best. They're not there. We hire them. We got firemen. We're short firemen. We got them right here. Hire them back. I put in legislation, because I ran on this in '21. I held town halls. My first few months was my goal was to put in not one, not two, not three, but four pieces of legislation, which was left out. What, are you kidding me, Vicky? Nobody's even going to look at this. And you know what? I reintroduced it again in '23, and I reintroduced it now. There's four pieces of legislation sitting there. I did a press conference in March of '22, where I hosted over 450 people at Flushing Meadow Park in front of the Unisphere. All of you guys were there, okay? Now, I'm here today on behalf of my teachers, because I take this personally, my two employees as teachers, 22 and 29 years. Put these people back to work. Thank you, Michael. Michael Kain teaches the choice.
Thank you, Vicky. Thank you so much. God bless Vicky Palladino. She's been fighting for us for a long time. Round of applause for her. Thank you, Vicky. My name is Michael Kain. I was a New York City special education teacher for 14 years until I was fired for declining the COVID shot. I started a group called Teachers for Choice, and we've been suing in federal and state court for three years now to get our jobs back, thanks to Robert F. Kennedy Jr. and Children's Health Defense, who have been backing those lawsuits. Our federal case is stuck in the Second Circuit Court of Appeals for 20 months, just sitting there. So God bless the Common Sense Caucus for saying, end the appeals. End all the appeals for all the workers who have won. Just like Daphne, a year ago, me and nine other teachers, we won our jobs back. I went to my school as well, too. I had a great conversation with my principal, who was wonderful. But guess what? She couldn't let me in, because the city's appealing, appealing, appealing. That needs to stop. It needs to stop now. I want to talk about one other controversy in this that almost no one has covered, and we need to get to the bottom of what Dr. Jay Varma's role was in this, as well as Dr. Chosky and Bill de Blasio. Mandatory COVID testing. Do you remember this? 2020, there was mandatory COVID testing that came in. They forced all employees and children to undergo testing. You couldn't get your own test. You had to use theirs. What was one of the companies that they had contracted? Fulgen Genetics. The LAPD and the FBI have confirmed Fulgen Genetics can databank your DNA from the COVID swat and have questionable ties to the Chinese government. What role did Dr. Jay Varma play in getting that contract? What role did Dr. Chosky play? What role did former Mayor Bill de Blasio play in this? Our freedoms are at stake. The freedom to your own DNA, to your children's DNA, is at stake based on who we're electing here. Mayor Adams, Speaker Adams, we must, we must, we must investigate this and get to the bottom of this. The credibility of New York City and the health departments in New York City is on the line, and we need to keep this pressure up. Thank you all so much.
Welcome, Michael Kain. Going to bring up another fighter, a Brooklyn council member, Ina Vernikoff, who will introduce Becky.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. And thank you to Stephen Crowder for uncovering and exposing what we all already knew. Thank you. There were almost nine million New Yorkers in the city. Most of them were forced to vaccinate. And the majority of them, a lot of them, had medical consequences from having to vaccinate. A lot of them lost their jobs because they had to vaccinate, because they didn't want to vaccinate. We couldn't bury our grandparents. People couldn't attend burials of their own parents, while one sicko, yes, I said it, one sicko was partying at the same time he was mandating this on all New Yorkers. This is disgusting. Below the belt, it must be investigated. And Mayor Adams has a real opportunity here to undo what was done. to undo what was done by the former administration under Mayor de Blasio. Reinstate and compensate all those who lost their jobs. And withdraw the damn appeals. It's enough. I'm gonna give a couple of minutes to my communications director, who's gonna tell you about her personal story. Thank you very much.
My name is Becky Olivera. I'm the communications director for Councilwoman Ina Vernikoff. And I stand here to tell you what we've already known intuitively for years. The COVID mandates were always based on lies. And Dr. Jay Varma and his elite club of left-wing totalitarian lunatics were laughing behind our backs the entire time. My life was turned upside down by the vaccine mandate. I made the personal medical decision that was right for me. But the psychological warfare that waged on our TV screens made my own friends and family treat me like a diseased beauty. Many wouldn't speak to me. Many wouldn't even touch me. I was rejected from housing, jobs, and volunteer opportunities. I had to fight for months with my college before I was even allowed to step on campus and finish my senior year. And when I finally was allowed, it was with all kinds of illogical conditions aimed at shaming and inconveniencing me. Me, a straight-A student with a double major, as much as humanly possible. All of this suffering while beneath my feet, Dr. Jay Varma was enjoying sex parties with hundreds of strangers in some Wall Street basement. I can't blame my friends and family for believing what they thought was a trusted source. I blame Dr. Varma for abusing their belief in him and manipulating their fears so effectively that they turned against me. In a more just society, there would be severe consequences for a man this debauched and despicable. The people of this city, everyone standing here today and everyone watching at home, were unwilling subjects to one of the most heinous psychological manipulation campaigns of our generation. Understand this well. These mandates were never about public health. They were always about exercising as much control over us as possible.
That's right.
Thousands lost their livelihoods. Thousands were separated from family members during their final moments of life. And thousands still suffer to this day, all for absolutely nothing. Now that the truth is come straight from the COVID czar's mouth, is the city gonna compensate New Yorkers for their suffering? And I must ask, will the city compensate me for my own suffering? Dr. Varma, I'm gonna speak to you directly now. You owe this city an apology, though we all know you'll never give one. Prepare to be investigated. You were placed in a position of power and should be held to the highest standard possible. And any regular New Yorker who committed fraud on such a scale would be rotting in a jail cell as we speak. The time for elected and unelected bureaucrats alike to run roughshod over our lives is over. We want consequences and we want accountability. Thank you.
I want to bring up another strong voice, this time from the Bronx, Councilmember Kristi Marmarano.
I'm Councilwoman Kristi Marmarano. Like I said, in the northeast Bronx. And like many other New Yorkers, I'm tired of those in power abusing their authority with reckless disregard to the very rules that they impose.
Yes.
So, as a former healthcare worker who has worked throughout the pandemic, I am appalled by the "do as I say, not as I do" attitude from Dr. Varma. It's absolutely disgusting. And as a mother to a young child whose education was halted during the formative years, I'm angry that she's missed out on the proper education that she so well deserved. To see a little four-year-old going to school for the first time using glasses and having to wear a mask and sitting behind Plexiglas was probably one of the most devastating things that I had to see for my child, and it broke my heart. Now, as a neighbor to a family, a family friend, who one of their members took their last dying breath in a hospital, alone, without the comfort of the members of their family beside them, I'm heartbroken for them to have to experience that and especially what they had to endure. This is years of issues that they will have with the situation. And now, as a councilwoman, I stand here with the Common Sense Caucus to call upon our colleagues in government to ask for them to bring Dr. Varma in for an oversight hearing, to hold him accountable, and to get the answers that us as New Yorkers deserve. So, thank you very much, everybody.
I was going back to Brooklyn. My fellow Democrat, Calvin Jaeger, Councilmember Jaeger.
Thank you very much, Councilman Holden. My colleague at the Common Sense Caucus. You know, when my grandmother passed away that year in 2020, with over 100 descendants, children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. Our funeral was just a handful of people at a graveside because we were told it wasn't safe, the outdoors next to me. That the people who told us it wasn't safe were engaged in all sorts of various other unsafe activities. But they had their fun while they were denying us life. And our community, for the brunt of this, there was an incredible light of derision, of difference, shined on us as we were the violators of the norm because we wanted to get our kids back into school, because we wanted to worship in synagogues, because we wanted to get back to normal. And we were the poster children in our community for what was wrong with those who would challenge the rules. The rules that we now know were made by one guy in a basement somewhere, that he was himself not going to follow. Those rules that we were challenging led me and some of my colleagues in Brooklyn to go to our neighborhood parks with bolt cutters and open those parks up and let the kids back in. Our schools opened up and let the kids back in because we knew that eight kids at home on cellphones was not education. We knew they weren't learning. We knew the parents needed to get them back into schools or they were gonna go crazy. We knew what was smart, what was right, what was safe, what was healthy needed to be done. And then, it was one individual who was making rules that we were violating. So, what did he do? Made sure to, this building, craft rules that sent alphabet soup of every single agency, HPD, ABC, you name it, DOB showing up, knocking on business doors, "What's going on here? Oh, you're not six feet apart, summons, summons, summons." All across our neighborhoods, summons is after summons is after summons. And it's so clear. It's so clear. It was clear then, but now we have the evidence that it was all fake. So, you have thousands and thousands of people who have either done what they did not want to do, take a shot that they didn't choose to get, or worse, that they chose not to and lost their jobs. Highly trained, we invested money as a city into their training. Highly trained police officers, firefighters, teachers. Every single department has this. People who we paid to train, who took civil service exams, who learned the trade and who lost their jobs. Maybe we can't go back and change what happened, but we can change where we are right now.
Yes, we can.
The people who lost their jobs have to get their jobs back. They must. That's a straight-up fairness. The businesses that receive summonses, and by the way, they're not just businesses. They're religious institutions, their churches, their synagogues, to the point where some of my colleagues in nonprofit organizations, I see one over here from a nonprofit organization, had to go to the United States Supreme Court to get the justices of the Supreme Court to say, "You cannot discriminate against people who want to pray together." The rules that were so-called violated that resulted in tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars in summonses being issued. I introduced the bill, as Vicki said. We do some legislating here. At least we try, but they don't let us because this building is where common sense goes to die. You know, I introduced this bill in the last session of council, introduction number one. First bill of the session. And what it said was that anybody who got summonses related to violating a state of emergency rule during COVID, the summons would be dismissed. If they paid it, they'd get their money back. If they didn't, they would go away like nothing ever happened. In other words, let's turn the page. 2019, 2020, '21 was a painful time in our nation's history, in the world's history, in our city's history. Let's turn the page. Let's stop and let's turn the page. And the same thing goes for our employees. It's time to turn the page. It's time to stop with the grievances of the past where you didn't get the shot in 2020 when they told you to. So, now in 2024, you still can't have your job back. The times have changed. The facts are clear. A teacher not getting a shot and going into school is not endangering anybody.
That's right.
A firefighter not getting the shot and going into his firehouse, he's still gonna be able to run into that burning building and save your kid. It's time to turn this page. Let folks back to their jobs, right the wrongs of this city. And I'm here, I'm ready to do it. And in a couple of months, I'm gonna tell my friends that Albany help is on the way because I'm gonna go up there. We're gonna need that fight there, too.
I want to bring up a parent and a fighter for our kids, our school kids, from Queens, Yotin Chu.
Thank you, Common Sense Caucus. My name is Yotin Chu. I'm a public school mom and a candidate for state senate in eastern Queens.
Yeah.
The COVID policies that were supposed to be a two-weeks-only plan in the spring of 2020 upended the lives of over a million students and their families in New York City. My daughter was in third grade. From the lockdown where my nine-year-old didn't leave our apartment for over three months to relentless Zoom school to limit her return to in-person due to DOE's unique eight-feet distancing rules, our naturally social children were subjected to silent lunches and closed playgrounds. They took the joy away from being in school. Our kids lost graduations, proms, sports. Instead, they were perpetually on screens, hours on video games and social media. As parents, we went against everything we were told to raise mentally and physically healthy kids. As an immigrant ESL student myself, I know the importance of being in school, immersing in hearing and speaking a new language. My heart breaks for the thousands of ESL students stuck behind black Zoom boxes with no connection to this new country and no one to help them at home. They missed a critical period of language acquisition that will impact them for the rest of their lives. It is these families in non-English-speaking households, the low-income families and the middle class that will suffer the greatest from these harsh Zoom remote learning policies. The well-documented learning loss and still too high chronic absenteeism that we're still seeing in schools are harsh reminders of New York City's prolonged and cruel COVID policies. Dr. Varma led the policies that made New York City a dark world for our children, all while not believing the risk that he projected to keep all of us in fear. Let us not forget and let us right these wrongs. Thank you.
And another representing businesses, small businesses, I want to bring up a good friend, Phil Hickey from Masbit in my district, who I've known for how many years? 20, 30, 30 years?
Yes, at least. Hello, my name is Phil Hickey. I own a small tavern in Queens, New York. Myself and my parents opened up a small tavern in Masbit, Queens, New York, the year 1988. I owned my house outright with no debt, no penny owed to that house before COVID happened. I didn't own the bank anything. I didn't owe anything, anybody, anything. I was paying my mortgage. I didn't owe a penny to anything. We were a nice little tavern. I don't want to say my mom passed just before COVID. I can't say what it broke her heart. But since COVID happened, Warner de Blasio shut down my bar for this three-week curve that would have happened. I was closed for almost two years. I was forced to cut a hole in a wall. After about a year's time to serve a beer out through a window, I was told that would be enough. People would like it. Of course, I paid my rent on time. It nearly bankrupted me, put me into financial ruin. I paid my rent. I remortgaged my home twice. I now have a 30-year mortgage all over again. I lost my marriage. I'm in financial ruin. My health has deteriorated. I am now, my health is deteriorated. I'm in massive depression. Everything has gone downhill for me. In more ways than one, things are not well. I'm working on a 30-year mortgage all over again. Don't know how I'm gonna rebuild. I'm trying. I couldn't give it up because we owned it. When it's a family business, you fight hard to keep it. I try to keep it short. It's really hard to know that somebody could tell you, "Well, if you just put the arrows this way and you put the arrows that way, you find your business will work out fine." I was even cleaning a little stove, trying to clean the business. I would have, I don't know, the secret police come in and threaten you with $1,000 fines while you're trying to clean a stove behind your bar that your mask isn't on at 10:00 in the morning and threaten you with $1,000 fines because your mask is on while you're lying on your back trying to clean a stove. And you have to worry about this while you're struggling to worry about where your next penny is coming from. And you're worried about how you could even feed your family. And everything that a little business can go through when that's worrying how you're gonna put food on the table and how you can do this. And, you know, I thought I had a lot of words to say and I'm just running out of them right now. And thank you so much.
Now, this is unusual, but we're gonna bring up Gerald Morgan, who's the executive producer of Louder with Crowder. Good investigative reporting, knows no politics. If you're good, you're good. And again, this was exposed thanks to your organization. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. And like he said, my name's Gerald Morgan. I'm the CEO of Louder with Crowder, an apparent right-wing news organization. You know what? It doesn't matter what our politics are. We have Democrats behind me. We have Republicans behind me. And we have Jay Varma on tape. And guess what? Nobody asked him if he was a Republican or a Democrat or how he voted before. What we asked is, why were the policies put in place? What did you think about what you were doing? This man is not just a hypocrite. We're all hypocritical to some degree. This man never believed in the mandates to begin with. And yet, you have to hear these stories because of what he did, knowing full well that he didn't believe it. You know how I know? He went to sex parties. He went to dance parties. He didn't fly with his family because of optics, not because it was actually dangerous. These stories that you're hearing right now and everybody in the media, this is not just a New York story. This story got picked up in India. This story got picked up in England. There have been almost 20 million people listening to this story across the United States, and we are not done yet. We're not done because most people probably don't know that these stories are still happening right now. They probably don't know that in cities across America that looked at the city of New York and said, "We will follow their lead." That there are people in San Francisco, in Chicago, in Dallas, in Los Angeles, in Cincinnati that are dealing with the same thing. But guess what? I'm not from any of those places. I'm from Texas, but I'm here to fight for New York. I never thought in all my life that I would have to hear stories like this today. Stories that resonate with me. Stories that resonate with me. My wife, pregnant, nursing, 100% remote worker, get the jab or get fired. That's the same kind of story you're hearing here, but guess what? She got to go back to work. These people did not. We cannot allow this story to stop today. This story has to go on. And so guess what? We've got more on Dr. Varma. We have to stay on it. You watching right now have to stay on it. You behind the cameras, you behind the microphones, you taking notes to write articles right now, you have to stay on it. I know these council members are going to stay on it because this is people's lives and it's been messed with far too long. One last thing. Varma put the policy in place. De Blasio instituted it, made sure that the mandates went out. Adams, you're continuing it. I have a question for you. How long? Today's a great day to drop all of these cases.
One last speaker. I want to bring up Joey and Ariola, just introduce somebody else. But why is the mayor appealing these judge's rulings? Why is he appealing? We have no clue as to why he's doing this. We're calling on him to do the right thing. Again, he's blaming Mayor de Blasio, but he's continuing, like Mr. Morgan just said, he's continuing his policies, de Blasio's policies. So there's no excuse. Mr. Mayor, stop the appeal right now.
And thank you to the media. We're really having patience to listen to everybody because each one of their stories are so unique and they are so important. But we do have Patricia Finn here with us today, and she'd like to read to you an affidavit that Dr. Varma submitted to the courts.
Thank you. Thank you all. I get tears from me. I have here an affidavit that Dr. Varma submitted in lawsuits. I, I represented. Do you hear me now?
No.
The news here.
The press.
Well, anyway, I represented the police department in these lawsuits. I represented businesses and I currently represent the fire department and the EMT. In every one of these cases, Dr. Varma submitted the same affidavit, and I'd like to read that to you. He's talking about the need of distancing and for closing down of the business. He says indoor contact by his very age presents to inherent increased risk factors for transmission. It encourages a riskier setting indoors and involves what riskier he hates.
Riskier behavior, eating.
What could be more riskier than rolling a molly and partying under a bed on Wall Street? I don't know about you, but I don't definitely believe those comments about people. Anyway, he goes on and he says entertaining the year concerts could benefit citizens. They will hopefully be closed down. He says it makes it even more urgent that New York City retain essential measures to prevent COVID infections when possible. Dr. Varma was giving medical advice. I urge every one of you here to contact the district attorney, Alvin Bragg, and to contact Attorney General Patricia James and have them attack, have them investigate and prosecute Dr. Varma the same way he hunted down Donald Trump with same fervor and zeal. And let's get justice for these times. It's an important thing. You should also contact the state authority, the licensing board of Dr. Varma. He was apparently giving medical advice, advice that he obviously didn't believe.
We're going to open it up to questions from the press on.
Can you sort of connect the dots for us? What is Dr. Varma's behavior, which he acknowledged in a statement was hypocritical in terms of gathering? What does that have to do with your push to drop the appeal? What's the connection between Dr. Varma basically making a point?
Vicky wants to know. I could answer, but go ahead.
You want to know the one of the, out of the sluest stuff he said undercover? Want to know what got me the most? It should get every single one. Because let me tell you, bringing all this back, it's like it happened yesterday. This has really refueled a whole lot of anger. And I'm going to tell you what really got me. The fact that that man said on tape, he said, "We tried to enforce it hard until we could get everybody to break so that we could force them to get this vaccine." It was all about breaking the backs of us New Yorkers. How far could they go? Look at the tape. I may not be quoting exactly, but when I read that line and then the final thing was F the people. Look up that tape. You want to connect the dots? Start there.
People died because of him. Another answer is, uh, Dr. again, Dr. Varma, Dr. Varma gave us all these restrictions, but it was okay to break it according for him to do it, not for us. People got fined. I got the barber across the street from my office, $1,000 because he didn't have the dots on the floor that said six feet apart. He said, "I only had one person in the store at a time." It didn't matter. They kept ticketing, summoning every business in my district almost. It was like the COVID police were going around, very strong off. So you, you don't, if you don't see hypocrisy here, you don't see this, then, you know, I don't know what. There's a bridge right over there.
Yeah, we can say the bridge.
Yeah, what are questions? Questions on the press?
Hold on, wait. Marshall, pray. Marshall, pray.
No, no, no.
Press, press.
No, you gotta wait.
Press only, right now.
Mike, you don't have to order. Don't be quiet, Mike.
Hold on, hold on.
Don't be stupid. Don't be stupid, Mike. You don't have to order.
Go ahead, Marshall.
Got a little loud, I can't. What you're saying is this, that the hypocrisy of Dr. Varma going to sex parties and going to a grave under a bed of 100 people calls in question all the other things that are in play. Maybe we should explain that.
Again, if he, he can risk it. Why? He's a doctor. He can risk it. He has, he has everything, you know, he, he has a wide open door here to do what he pleases. Again, if you don't see, if people don't see that as just ridiculous, that every, every one of us, people's lives were destroyed, people's businesses were destroyed, and this guy's partying and taking drugs.
And he laughed about it.
Joanne has an important point. Joanne has an important point about your question.
Who voted for Dr. Varma?
Tell us what you think they should do and what they, what questions you want to ask Dr. Varma when you get in front of the city council.
Well, again, it, you know, where did he get these rules from? The CDC, where he came from? Because they were changing it, you know, week to week. First, we shouldn't wear masks. I remember sitting in front of the county, "We're not supposed to wear masks. It doesn't do any good." Then we were told, "We have to wear masks." Then we're, we're told the vaccine is optional. Then we had to get a vaccine. Then if we didn't, we were fired. This is ridiculous. This is, this has to be investigated. All this, are you going to take the word of Dr. Varma? Are you going to really think that he knew best when he was violating everything he was telling us? That's where the hypocrisy, but also everyone on this level of, you know, of government to the, from the feds to the state, everyone should be investigating this and not letting this go because these are, these are the people that were hurt. They're standing behind us.
Additionally, Dr. Varma says in his own words on that video that there was no difference between the vaccinated and the unvaccinated. That there was natural immunity. And how, why should he be prosecuted? Because this is a declaration to the United States District Court, Eastern District, where it says, "I, Jay Varma, M.D., declare that under penalty of perjury, the following: He perjured himself by signing this affidavit." And that law should make this administration right the wrong, drop their appeals and get our municipal workers back to work. And so that can, they can be reinstated and compensated.
Well done, well done.
Any other questions?
Is there anything that you're proposing for, is there anything that you're proposing for workers in the private sector who lost their jobs?
Well, again, this is all, you know, this, that's why things need to be investigated because the private sector needs to be represented here and not just the public. So the private sector, once they get him on the stand and get him before a congressional panel, we won't know a lot of things, but this needs to be brought out. And that's why, you know, so many lawsuits will come out. That's why they want to suppress this. Press, press, credential press.
I'm a fired city worker and I just have a question.
No, you got to take from the press first.
Only first.
From the press first. I can't make different rules.
I'm going to wait my turn. I'm going to wait my turn.
All right. Any more press?
Thank you.
Any more press? All right, go ahead. I can't, the people that are standing here were, everybody was invited. People that are standing here care. I can't speak for all the council members. Now you got your opportunity.
Saying hi to some people. So city council, city council has their powers bestowed upon to them from the city charter.
Correct.
And your jobs and your duties are in the city charter, right? So right now we have people here that are standing together. They want to get their jobs back, right? It's been three years since I was fired. It took three years for me to get another job, part-time. I will never go back to the DOE because it's a fraudulent agency. And I know some teachers in Paris here feel the same way as most agencies in New York City. The question that I have is since 2020, the mandates were established and there had to be some kind of agreement, some kind of yay or nay that said this was something good to have. Who in city council found in a document that they had the promulgated authority to establish mandates in this city? Because city council is supposed to stand up for the counties and the districts of this city, and they did not since 2020. And here we are in 2024. It took two years. Last time I was standing here on these steps and I spoke to press, it took two years now to move something forward. And I read the document. I read the document and it's flawed, unfortunately. And I hate to bring it out like this. You've got to read those documents and look it over. I read and write documents for a living now. We submit documents and we hold public servants accountable like how we have Adams in Supreme Court right now for violating his oath of office to the United States Constitution and New York State Constitution and the city charter. I want to know who gave anyone in city council the authority to enforce it, not write it, because you all have the power to write whatever you want. Who enforced it and why? Who gave these agencies, DOH, DOE, Department of Sanitation, the Fire Department, the NYPD, who by the way arrested me twice for not being vaccinated? Who gave you guys the authority to do it?
That was de Blasio.
Who gave the authority?
That was the mayor.
That was the mayor.
And city council did nothing. Why?
Well, I wasn't in office at that time.
I'm next, I'm next. Mr. Holden, Mr. Holden, I have an audio.
I still have questions. The whys.
I have an, hold on a second. I have a small comment. I have an, I have a comment. It's a small comment. When Brook, when mayor was Brooklyn Borough president, he was letting his people, his staff get tested while everybody else was getting vaccinated or losing their job. And we have the audio to prove it. I, I, last year in 2022, hold on a second. 2020, hold on a second. 2022, I gave testimony and it was being ignored.
Because a thousand and one families.
Like you're doing now, like you're doing now, it was ignored. You see that? That's exactly what they did.
Lost so much.
We have audio from Adams' office.
She's dead.
We have audio from his office.
She'd be here. We got to do something. City council, let me just jump. She arrested me for coming to her office. So there's so much that I've got this way. 1109 summary entry, you were able to bring up judicial review against any city council member, agency, or employee of the city that violates the rights. Any single person here, you want to come and talk to me and find out about true action? It's time to start writing affidavits and taking these people to court with your power. Not waiting. We cannot just watch and get what?
Facebook President, you can hear us. And we take a selfie, Phil Hickey.
Give it away every election and wait for someone to do something. It's time to do something. I'm here standing together, every single one of you. Come to me, I will help you. Every Adams, I took every Adams and Alvin Bragg to court.
Yeah. Where was like, hey, thank you, good job. Where was the, where was the man? You know what I wanted to say? They give you a logbook.
Give me a log? I have to change customs.
Love you.
I just wanted to know, how do I be told?
Gets me to go again, you know?
No, 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 no. Because he said.
I wish I had that on video somehow.
I don't know.
So good to see what's going on.
I know I'm not easy, but if anyone emailed me or anything, would call me, there's nothing to make out.
I appreciate it.
Me and me alone, there's no team.
I appreciate it.
I understand.
I appreciate the whole group.
I understand.
I go to the scene.
And while you're trying to get the people down, lock up masks, you're...